Let us pray. Your Father, we thank you for this gathering once again. We thank you for the joy and the love you've placed in the hearts of those who dwell here. Father, we pray your blessings upon this meeting. We pray your blessings upon the decisions that will be made tonight and the ideas and thoughts that will be entertained. We pray your guidance from above on these with dealing with your people that as much good will come out of this Lord as anything, that it all be your will. Your will alone. Father God, we just ask your guidance and your direction for all things dealing with your people, that the blessings be upon us as we make these decisions. Lord, we just ask that you would bless those in need, would bless our children on the battlefield wherever they may be, whatever the situation may be. We pray your blessing upon the government, upon the United States government, on our Congress and our presidents, that they will give right decisions in whatever they do concerning your people. Father, we just pray your blessing upon this great nation. We just ask that you would guide us and direct us as you would have us to go in Jesus' name.
The allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's have a count. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove Resolution 2012-11 from the agenda tonight with approval of the co-signer.
Okay. Any other changes? If not, let's vote on the approval of the agenda with that Resolution 2012-11 taken off. We did have second over here. Got a motion and a second. This man's second. Okay, let's vote on the agenda. For the agenda. We voted on the agenda, the motion removed. Well, the approved and will do. Once we approve the agenda, it will remove it. Okay. Do you want to ask a question or do you? Did everybody hear her?
No.
She said, "Does anyone want to change their vote?" If not?
I think yes.
Okay. All right. Agenda is approved minus B under unfinished business. Okay, does everybody have a chance to review minutes? Or you just minutes?
No.
Thank you. So, Mr. West, two second. Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote please. Okay, did y'all hear her? She said, "Did anyone want to change their vote?" We're going to make sure that that's asked every time. Okay, let's have a count. Let's have a count please. Okay, Ms. Beck. Will you go first?
Second. Resolution 2012, same thing, comment that.
Okay.
Let's use appointments and conferences.
Okay, hang on just a minute. Let's give him time to get, give time to him. Are you ready? Okay.
Margie Allgood, Karen L. Reshears, James D. Bradger Jr., Teresa A. Champion, Linda Andy Ford, Amber Victoria Dawson, Andrea Farrell, Chantaeus Gilling, Joe L. Lester, Jennifer Matthews, Michael D. Melton, Stephanie B. Moore, Tina R. Bulladax, Cindy T. McDaniel, Charles C. Northcott, Bryna Parks, LaRonde I. Tips, Angela Lee Vaughn, David T. Wall, David E. Johnson, Mildred L. Faton, Conell D. Roden Jr., Terry R. Williams, Valerie Smith Mullins, Colleen P. Saunders, and Casey Patterson.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept an operation. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Duck, you have the motion. Mr. Kelly, you have the second. Okay, any discussion? Let's vote please. Okay, Mr. Murphy, let's have a count. Okay.
May this impart just the commission.
Okay, Anne Frisbee, David Pennington, Keith Thatcher, Virgil Alford, Rush Griffin. And this is a mayor's appointment. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. Did you see Commissioner Alford? Okay. Just give him a chance to give. Did he have the commission out?
Same. Beer board.
Okay.
Members are Virgil Alford, Bobby Brown, Jimmy Bradford, Tim Morris, Barry West.
Okay, that is a mayor's appointment and I'll entertain a motion to accept this. Okay, thank you. Second? Who? Okay. Commissioner Thatcher, okay. Any discussion? If not, let's vote please. Commissioner Duncan, it's not working.
I made this two buttons, so it should be a yes, but on top of that, it should say no.
So yours is a yes when it comes, oh, let's have a count please. Okay.
A county coroner has a commission appointment and it is Dr. Al Brandon.
He's been serving since his own name. Does the commission want to reappoint Commissioner, something on the branch here?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
One.
Okay, let's vote please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Okay, if not, let's have a count.
Okay. It is the 911 Communications, District Communications, and the members that their time is up is supported by the mayor and are by the commissions. Our Ross Simmons, Todd Stubblefield, and Jerry Brad.
Yep, and we want to leave them on. Any entertain a motion?
So good.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote please. Okay, did you say something, Commissioner Alford? Okay, let's have a count please.
Yeah, four levels and bridges committee. Members down are Jesse Van, Tim Morris, Keith Thatcher, Virgil Alford, Barry West, and Steve Parks.
Okay. All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Duncan, any discussion? Let's vote please. If not, let's have a count please. Thank you.
The service officer, which is our veteran representative, is Frank Reese.
Okay, that is a commission appointment and Frank Reese is serving now until he wants to serve. I'll entertain a motion to review that. So good. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote please. Okay, if not, let's have a count.
A and Chorid County Field members are that their term is up. January 12th, our team are Connie Larry, Gary Cordell, and Bobby Brown, who is associate member.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? Let's vote please. Okay, let's have a count.
All right, jail inspection committee. This is a law enforcement appointment. The members now are Gary Kea, Donna Thomas, Jackie Duncan, Robert Gillum, Lee Duckett, and Anne Frisbee. David Pennington is mayor's honor.
Does law enforcement want to leave it that way?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept this. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
One.
Let's vote please. All right, let's have a count please.
Emergency management board. The members whose time is up are Dale Brandon, Al Payne, and Court Officer.
Okay, now Dale Brandon is the rule, Payne is Tallahome, in court, and this is a commission appointment. Okay. All right, thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote please. If not, let's have a count.
Okay, the next K is planning commission and the office person that's up is Gary Cordell.
Yeah, we're going to point Gary Cordell back. With that, I can't motion to take that. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote please. Okay, if not, let's have a count.
Okay. L, Law Department Establishment Board, which probably didn't have to be on the agenda, but.
No, you don't have to vote on this one, so you can take it off. But I wanted it on here, so we could tell who's on the board. Even though I don't have to bring it and vote on it, I still want it. We need to read the names, so we know.
We have to tell how my two rule and one major. Marty Scott, Alan Sweet, Virgil Alford, Donnie Thomas, and Charles Harris.
All right, now let's go to the next item.
Have a building authority.
Okay.
We had one person which should come off until September, who has resigned because he moved out of the area. This is a Tallahome appointment, so it.
Well, it's a mayor's appointment, but it's two.
But it's a Tallahome, it's Debbie Brown, Becky Millen.
Okay.
Debbie Brown.
Is it Brown?
Brown, I'm sorry, Brown.
Brown, yeah. With that, I entertain a motion to accept that appointment. Thank you. Second? Thank you. You see the second up here? Mr. Mann? Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. Commissioner Kea, unload your batteries, you're getting wood. Is that the problem? Should look at. If not, let's have a count.
What is number nine?
Number nine, county officials standing in special committees. Okay. Unfinished business. A, Resolution 2013-01, a resolution admitting provisions of Article 4, Section 4047, and the zoning resolution, Resolution 2006, as amended, Resolution 2012-10. Coffee County, Tennessee, adjusting the amount of the reclamation bond.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion here. Get a second, so we discuss this. We need a motion on this resolution. Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Thank you. All right, let's go into discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer amendment to the resolution. I'd like for the resolution to be replaced with this. Whereas there is a need to act to establish fair and active reclamation bond for any mining operations, whereas the Coffee County Planning Commission has reviewed and laid recommendation, now therefore being resolved, the program E3B1B2I of Section 4.047, be modified to accept the recommendation of the Coffee County Planning Commission regarding procedure and means to determine the appropriate reclamation bond for any potential mining operations, so as to actively protect the future financial interests of the Coffee County taxpayers and citizens.
Okay, we need a second on this. Okay, so what we're going to do is vote on the amendment.
Well, let's discuss it first.
See, I know, but I'm telling you what we're going to do. We're going to vote on the amendment and then we'll vote on, let's discuss the amendment. Commissioner Alford, I wasn't going to vote on it, but thank you for keeping an eye on it. Okay. All right, discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, let's break it down and tell it what it means. Those are I's and Bs and Cs and all that stuff. All that's good information, but it doesn't tell us nothing.
This amendment will take the recommendation of the Coffee County Planning Commission, which will look at each and any mining operations that make application of this county. They will use expert opinion and advice and so forth to determine what would be the proper reclamation bond for that mining operation. As mining operations can vary, there can be certain degrees, you could have a bond limit set to high, bond limit set to low. The proper means and procedure would be to use proper authorities to determine what would be appropriate.
Should we then define who those property authorities are and what their qualifications must be?
And shouldn't we define what the A, part B, part A, and all those other things are, spelled out in the resolution, so we know clearly what we're voting?
Are you asking Commissioner Brown that question? Or? Is that? Okay. Commissioner Brown?
I believe, Mr. Chance, you have a first question. Was that in regard to who?
Right.
I'd say the proper people as the planning commission alluded to would be proper engineers and authorities in that area.
Engineers in what field?
To determine, if you have a mining operation and you've got to do reclamation, you know, me as a novice citizen, I would have no way to turn what would be the proper bond for that. Only someone who's properly qualified to assess and evaluate that operation and their plan and what they intended to do and would be doing would be an authority in doing that.
Bobby, can I? Do we not need to define then what the qualifications of that individual are? And on top of that, does everybody here understand what the reclamation of a four year actually entails?
Yeah. Give me to answer your first question. I feel that the planning commission would need to, I would agree with you, Mr. Chance, look at that and they can be more specific in defining, you know, authorities and sources that would be utilized by both parties.
Okay, I think. Commissioner Alford? Commissioner? Okay, yeah, when he gets done, though, Commissioner Alford has a question after.
I'd really want to see it broke down into various subparts and have it categorized out and therefore, I'm not sure that tonight, you know, I'm not going to say I disagree with what you're asking, Bobby, but I would like to see it spelled out so we know exactly what it is that we're voting on when we're talking part B, part A. I can't follow that, especially when it's coming from amended amendment. And I don't have it spelled out right and what inch one of that, what that definition is, one of those things are. So for that, for me, I couldn't support that enough until that's broken down.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Duck.
I guess another question that goes with that, I'm trying to get into form of questions, Bobby, but when you're looking at that, and again, I don't know if it's good or bad what you propose, because I don't understand what you're asking us to do. I certainly don't want to be in a position that the planning commission is setting and establishing what those fees are going to be and what the reclamation costs are, because that's not their job, that's our job. And I certainly would not want to turn this over to them. And second, to go with that, the fact is, if you look at the way the regulations are agreed today, all of these kind of establishments are going to be built either within a city or within an urban growth boundary. And I certainly think if we're going to do something, we need to put some extraterritorial requirements in there that let those cities and municipalities that are involved with that being stuck in their growth boundary, having them study and being part of the process of doing that. Currently, the rule, we only have a rural planning commission, but their actions are beginning to significantly affect what happens outside of rural areas and dealing with what's in the urban planning growth. And we need to do what a lot of communities have and go to an extraterritorial kind of arrangement to let those communities participate in that as well.
Commissioner Duck.
The information that's been in question is in the proposal that was made by the planning commission, and that's still the recommendation. I don't have a copy of that before me. It was presented to the full commission and that information is on.
Basically, excuse me, I mean, interrupt, but in regard to the program D, if you look at the resolution, that's the same program that I just voted in the amendment, so that's on Resolution 2013-01. And that is one section where it was established in $4,000 per acre and $200,000. So basically, coming back to what you was asking, Mr. Kelly, is this is basically saying reclamation bond instead of being defined by this commission, which there's some question of who really has authority to set and determine the reclamation, now whether it is the planning commission or the county commission, and that's not going to be rectified here tonight. But whichever case may be, the amendment I've offered of is where you would seek proper authorities and sources to determine what would be a proper reclamation bond for the mining operation that would be applied. And therefore, it wouldn't be an arbitrary amount set by just lay planning commission members or lay county commissioner members like. members or lay county commissioner members like ourselves who do not have the expertise to do so.
Okay. Commissioner Chance and Commissioner Offerd?
Do we also need then to define what reclamation actually is? Because I'm not sure that everybody has an understanding of what reclamation of a mining or quarry operation actually entails. And that's gotta be defined as well. So do we need to define that as well at the same time?
I'd say that would be some, one of the other issues you brought forward. I think the planning commission would need to look at that and get a proper definition and define it, you know, of reclamation and what reclamation would involve and, you know, clarify that, and I think that would be a proper thing.
As it stands now, do we have, is there someone here with the planning commission? I hope we did.
We do have the vice chairman.
Vice chairman, who knows that?
Gary Cordell.
Mr. Cordell?
Mr. Cordell, would you mind stepping up? Now, you know, I asked him to come in, and he had another appointment, so he was willing to stay so he could answer some questions. I thank you for doing that, too, Coach. We need to ask you a question.
I appreciate it as well, Mr. Cordell. The question I've got is, as it stands right now, what exactly is requirement of a mining or quarry operation to reclaim the land the operation took place on?
I cannot answer that specific question.
I think a lot of people have the misperception or misconception that the reclamation includes filling in the hole. It doesn't. It means recovering the land where the actual plant sat. And that would entail, in most other areas, it entails removing any pressure run or any kind of rock that was put down as a foundational barrier to support the way of the plant has been removed, tops will be brought in if needed, trees planted, grass is planted, and that's the extent of it. So if anybody's ever done any clearing, rubbing, or planting or anything like that, four thousand dollars a acre is more than sufficient for that. So, you know, I wanna make sure everybody understands that the reclamation of a quarry does not entail filling in a three-hundred-foot-deep hole.
If I may, going back to, I think, the question at hand, as I understand it, we did, as the planning commission, we reported the situation and whatever kind of answer to give a fair response to this body that he asks us to adjourn as to a reclamation amount. What we sent back to this body was that in system with an application in front, all we were saying was with the supporting documents, whatever the enterprise is, we were saying that it's up to that enterprise to give us information. I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a geologist, and no one on our planning commission is. But to make the comparison here, I don't know that you won't ask a brain surgeon or make this body, or make a brain surgeon as to what it costs to operate on my head. We were just simply saying that if an, when an application is submitted, which apparently has not been, all we were saying was we want this body to correct, this entity, to submit an application with supporting document, part of that would be engineering studies that would come up after reclamation based on the proposed operation. That's all we were saying, and I don't know that, I think that's reasonable and probably the answer that I can.
Right. And I appreciate that. I guess I'd also ask the question then as to why or is this, is this requirement for independent reclamation studies upon one entity? Why not across all industrial classes that require any kind of reclamation rather than just, just one? You know, if it's gonna be applied to one, it must be applied to all, or if it's not gonna be applied to all, it should be applied to just one. And the, the cost of that is something that is, of course, that can be passed on to the applicant and can run into tens of thousands of dollars at times. And I don't know if that's a fair cost to burden an applicant with on a case-by-case basis, while at the same time, I think we can look at, and I think we should look at surrounding areas and rather than try and reach it with the wheel, use what other examples we've got around us and determine what is the most appropriate.
And along with that, I totally agree, but neither is it, we thought that neither is it responsible to the planning commission to try to come up with a cost and do and retain a geologist or whatever it can't expense to provide those figures. That should be provided by the applicant, and the application, it should be across the board. And if I may, Mr. Player, just to read very briefly about, from our zoning amendment. At the time an application is filed for approval of an M two district, a review, or an application about to be submitted, a review of the location, design configuration, and its impact will be conducted by comparing the proposed use, the preliminary development plan, the operational data, and the environmental assessments to the site location criteria. Goes on and on here. If I may just very briefly share some of those criteria with this body.
You may.
So the law will understand it better as to what we're just simply asking. And I won't go into every, I won't go into every document, everything in here, but for example, the proposed site will be located in an area apart from concentrations, this is in reference to the M two area. Will be located in an area apart from concentrations of residential developments and community facilities where concentration picking was present. The propose, and we've got to evaluate all that, that's what you're asking us to do. The proposed use does not have the potential to pollute or deteriorate the air quality, surface or souterr, uh, souterranean water or, I apologize, glasses here, or any other natural feature. The proposed site will not be located in an area where it has the potential to contaminate the source of the existing water supply. The proposed site will be free of sinkholes, caves, caverns, or other features that would present significant potential for surface clouts or significant degradation to local groundwater resources and so on. I could go on and on with this. But also, the proposed site will not be located within the one-hundred-year flood plain or within any wetland area. The proposed use will not decrease the value surrounding properties. And whether the proposed use promotes the public health, safety, and welfare or has potentially adverse environmental development impacts, those are some of the criteria that we've got to evaluate, if you want us to, because you're paying us the big bucks to evaluate, just kidding. But that's what we're asking to do. And we're trying to do that to the best of our ability, but we've got to start with an application and the supporting document, so we review that for a authority proposition, or a hospital, or a doctor's office, or a, whatever it is. I'll talk to you later.
Yeah. Can I follow up with that with, so if we put this, this burden upon the applicant to perform a study to determine what is the most appropriate bond amount, things such as that?
And I realize this would be tossed to the board.
Right. Beyond that, what happens then? Are we also then gonna bind ourselves, say that whatever the applicant pays for and has and is, and then ultimately determines to be a fair, equitable amount is the planning commission, and therefore, this legislative body wanna, wanna accept it as such? Because what happens when, when an applicant comes in and says, I paid a consultant, and they said it cost me two hundred dollars a acre to be bonded? Is that gonna be sufficient? Are we gonna accept that? Is that, or are we gonna still say, well, no, we gotta do something else? And so are we gonna, how are we gonna approach that situation when that happens? Because it will happen, sure.
We've got to evaluate all that and review of the guidelines that have been handed down and voted on by this commission years ago. We've got to determine that and make what we think is the best call, the right call, the fair call, considering all concern, not just looking one. And Mr. Dartford, if I may, I wasn't here in the November meeting, if I may say this, I understand that he was unmercifully, it sounded like even the messenger was shocked when he was here just to present the message. And I would ask for whichever commissioners, man, or whoever that, whatever that worked him over that way, you owe him an apology, because he's here only as a public servant to do his job, and that's what you're paying for.
Mr. Cordell, before you switch over, before you switch to something else, I want Mr. Chance to raise, which I think is a reasonable point. Obviously, you got somebody applying to the county, of course, who we're trying to protect here, the taxpayers of Cawpe County, the citizens of Cawpe County. And when there's a client, this data, this information, everything, I think it would be like any common sense approach. You know, you're not gonna let them just totally establish that, obviously, because it could be detrimental to the taxpayers of this county. So they would have hopefully well-qualified, proper sources that they get their data from, and then the county, in order to protect the county planning commission, in order to protect the citizens of this county, they would use a proper source or authority in order to determine if that is reasonable for the situation. And with the courts of law and all kinds of places, you have arbitrary arbitration procedures that take place, and, you know, if there was a situation where there's some different views by expert authorities, I think an arbitration process would probably resolve the matter. So that would just be my take on what you mentioned, Mr. Chance.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Chance, when you get done, this, I'll sort of write down the next one up, this Commissioner Offerd.
And I don't mean to take your time.
No, you take all the time you want.
But if we're, we're gonna take that approach then, how do we pay for it? And if we're doing it every single time, what is the allotted amount and where is the money coming from to pay for this independent source of study to verify whether or not the one that we're requiring upon applicant is applicant accurate value or not? How are we gonna pay for that and through what mechanism?
I agree. You know, I could comment, Mr. Cordell may wanna comment, but obviously, you don't have a tremendous number of mining operations that come making applications to the county. As far as I'm aware right now, we have no applications for many mining operations. Since I've been on the county commission, I'm really not aware of any applications for mining operations in this county. And Mr. Chance, I think it's a good point that you raised, and, you know, I think, of course, as far as costs and funding, you know, I'm not an expert in that area, but a lot of times, you may have to invest some money in order to get, you know, the opinions and the expert information in order to protect your taxpayers and citizens, because you could be talking about some significant future costs to the taxpayers of this county. So sometimes, we may need to invest some money to protect that, and we may be investing a very small amount of money compared to what the potential cost to taxpayers might be.
I fully understand that, but this resolution speaks to M two special impact industrial district, not just quarries. So anybody who applies for anything that falls within that would then have to perform a study and such. So it's not just limited to quarries, and I'm not even taking, my, my looking at this and my questions aren't based on whether or not there's a quarry being proposed or not proposed or anything such as that, it's looking at what are the short-term and long-term ramifications of making a change such as this, and, and how do we deal with it? And what are the possible outcomes? We do this, what could possibly happen? And how do we rectify those along the way? So it, to me, it doesn't matter if it's a quarry or not, being proposed, what matters to me is, is are, is what we are proposing sound and is it something that we can actually execute and make happen without burdening the taxpayer or even the applicant for that matter?
Mr. Chance, if you don't mind, I'd like to respond to that. Mr. Cordell here is chairman of the planning commission, and he may have, or he may not, the various operations that would fall under the M two classification, and I think if he read those off, most of the citizens, taxpayers here and others, would see a definite definitive need to do the same process, possibly with any of them. And I agree with you, any classifications and anything seeking an M two classification, I think it should be applied to all of them. And if you check that list of various operations that would come under an M two, I, I like to say, I think the majority of citizens in this county would definitely be concerned with those kind of operations and want this thoroughly addressed.
So in this, I wanna, I'll be quick here. How does that impact the resolution we'll be looking at here shortly for an M two zoning change here in the next twenty minutes or so? Different resolution. But how does that then impact that? Do we need to take that one off and start scratching that? Because that's, that's an M two special, special impact industrial district zoning change, and how does it impact that? And will that applicant need to go back and do their study?
Yeah. Mr. Chance, once again, I'm on the planning commission, excuse me, Mr. Cordell, to step on your toes, but one, we don't have an application. And of course, M twos are provided for in the growth plan, and they're provided for in the urban, or rural growth U G P, not U G V area, not the urban growth boundary, but planning growth area, P G A, you know, these letters in order here.
Right. And I'm not sure of that.
And, yeah, that's, of course, they're related issues, potentially, you know, like the mining operation could be one of the uses under M two.
Yes.
Okay. I've been thinking.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think there's a limit to, to that fourth way from on the floor, and I believe we've just passed that. My question is, if you're for concerns, you know, we've had documentation coming back and forth with planning to commission, a lot of codes and special numbers placed in the paragraph format, no, nothing really drawn out that any commission on this board can really look at at the time that you're voting on. I really want to see in a document form, if we voted on it here tonight, it's still need to be, continue to see it, um, looking at it in a document form, so that every commission can know exactly what they're voting on and what kind of impact. Not only is it gonna place on those entities that are coming in looking for potential growth, but also to protect, as you said, Bobby, every citizen in town. So we need to look at it. I personally wanna know what it is I'm voting on, especially if it's something that impacts this county as much as this does of what you're proposing. I wanna know every bit of it spelled out, you know, in writing, so I know, I don't want any E's and D's and C's. I don't, I'm not well-reversed on all of those codes, and when you start looking at some of those codes, they're pages. So my advice to this commission, from years that I've also been on here, as Brian, as you quoted a while ago, we need to be sure we're all voting on time.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Offerd, in just in response to that, the paragraph D three, B one, B two, I, section four, point oh, four, seven, what that is, it's in the resolution, see here, two thousand thirteen oh one, which I offered up the amendment to, it is the section providing for the reclamation bond. Now, just to provide a little bit simple answer to what you're saying, that's what those particular numbers, they're pulled exactly from two thousand thirteen oh one. Resolution then was saying four thousand dollars per acre, two hundred thousand dollars per project. That's where those are coming from, which is...
Some of the terminology that you used, Lord, was converted back to the proposed, back to what the planning commission had already proposed, and some of that was a little bit, doesn't fall in line with the conversations that I'm hearing tonight. And personally, for myself, unless I've got it in a document format, that I know exactly what it is I'm voting on, so that down the road, and we have company come in here and things don't smell right or look right to them, that we don't get into litigation with these various entities, because we voted on something that we don't know what we're voting on, and the county attorney has not had an opportunity to look at those codes and see how it protects the county, I, I don't feel comfortable. I would rather postpone this until March and take a look at it and, and put it in a format that this amendment process is passed. And if this is passed, then I'm gonna make a motion to do it as such.
Mr. Offerd, in response to what you mentioned, and having before you, November thirteenth, actually, or November thirteenth commission meeting, this commission voted thirteen to eight to accept the October twenty-four, two thousand twelve report from the planning commission concerning reclamation costs. And that is, actually, we took, that is in the minutes of the November thirteenth commission meeting, when we accepted that report. And what I've offered up here is what came from that report.
And that's good. I'm, you know, Bobby, I'm not trying to beat you up with that, I just wanted, with this, we've got a good audience here tonight, and I appreciate everyone coming. This is a topic that everyone, I believe, in the county is interested in, in various ways. Some pro, some pro, another way, some against this, some that. Where you bring up one topic, one person's for that, you bring up another, other topic, they'd be against that, and then for something else. So, and that's what makes us all unique and different, and that's why we appreciate everyone and certainly reverence each other's opinions. But we really need to be careful what we're voting on.
Commissioner Kelly?
Mr. Brown, you did mention we had voted to accept the... Mr. Bryan, you did mention we had voted to accept the report. That's what we did. We accepted the report as a report given. We did not approve it. We didn't take any action to recommend it, put no relationship except we got a report, we received it, we put it in the books, nothing else. That's exactly what we did to try to insinuate there was some other reason behind that. I'm sorry, that's not what happened. Second part of this, what I see before me says, here is the bonding that we're looking at, and it's an up-to-bond, we're going to require someone to get a bond, fine, $4,000 an acre, $200,000 a project. That's fine as far as if that's what we're going to do countywide. It's going to cost up to that amount. And if it's something that's very unusual, then we certainly have the right to do an exception. But to have a standard that people can come into relying on is very important. It's not, it's not an issue of do we have a quarry or don't we have a quarry? This is an issue of what do we do in this classification across the county? Every one of these, you know, we're talking about the application a couple down from here. We're coming in with another application that's going to do the exact same thing the quarry does except dig a hole in the ground. And we're not going to do this thing for them because it's not in your neighborhood. Well, we need to have it so that it covers everybody's neighborhood and everybody's treated fairly and properly in this. We certainly want to reclaim the stuff. We certainly want to put citizens in the best light we can put this county in. And I don't have a problem with the fact that what you said as far as we'll do it on a case-by-case. I certainly have a problem with throwing it over the wall and saying, well, we're just going to throw it at the planning commission and let them make the decisions because they're not an elected body that is to this county. And they only represent a very small fraction of the people of this county. Because they don't represent me as a telehome, and they don't represent anybody here from Manchester. They only represent rural, coffee, county only. I certainly don't want to be throwing over how my city's going to be allowed to develop and progress in future under that bus. I want to know that it's this commission that's going to take that on, we're going to approve the rate. I don't care if we have to do it for each one. When you share, open yourself up for a mess when you're going like, we're going to ask these guys to come in today and present to us what they think it'll cost so that we can then make it be something else. And you've already said, we have no expertise in doing this and no basis to make the decision. Take that one to court and see what the judge says when you have to defend your position. I'm sure Mr. Husky would enjoy defending one where you've already pled guilty and you're not capable of making the decision. So you're going to go forward with a plan that you'll make up the rules later on when you're dealing with someone else. We need to decide this either tonight. I certainly think Mr. Duffin has a good position. Put it down in writing, make it what it's going to be where we understand it. I sure don't want to turn over our authority as a county commission to a group of people. And I know they're doing the best job they can do, but they're private citizens with no more expertise than us. We may not have the expertise, but by taking the position you did, swearing into that position, we've taken it upon ourselves to protect the people and do it in the best manner we can. It is now our job to do and we need to step up and do it.
Commissioner Kelly, I think we're done and what the amendment says and the planning commission's role in this and looking at each entity and determining what is the appropriate reclamation bond based on expert authority, expert advice from people in the field that know it's the proper thing to do. I think it's just the opposite of what you said. I think this county be able to set up to more potential legal problems by coming in here and setting a precious and arbitrary amount. This amount here might be too little or too less, I don't know. But setting an amount, it's not a matter of setting a standard. The standard is you apply and they look at each entity on its own merits and then what they're going to be doing and use proper authorities, which are not going to come from the planning commission or this county commission. There's not a person on either of these bodies that has that authority or that expertise. So you're going to seek proper expertise and determine what would be appropriate for that entity. And what would be appropriate for one entity might not be appropriate for another.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Mr. Cordell, you want to be here the rest of the night, aren't you?
I've got a little meeting right now that I need to get out of.
Well, because there's a lot of things on these other resolutions dealing with the rights property that someone from the planning commission needs to be here. I'm following Mark's strand of thought here because, and it deals with this because, you know, in cases, this one refers to the case of a mining operation. Of course, Mr. Rice is a salvage operation. I have as much concern with what's on top of the ground as what's dug out of the ground is in destroying the land and the aesthetics and groundwater. And you may have mentioned that, you know, any proposals for M2 zoning would require a total plan of application, a plan, the impact. Now, the question is, I'm jumping a little bit ahead, did Mr. Rice provide that to you?
No.
Then why is?
I told you, you've got an operation there that's already existing and being an operation for here.
No, I mean, he's already got, I guess, that one area, but then we got 65 acres for what they propose to be M2. And I think Mr. Rice runs a good operation. I mean, we got a mining, we don't even have a mining, we've got one mining operation that's inactive in our county. We got three or four salvage operations. We might want to have a whole lot more that I have probably more trouble with going on in this county in its long-term impacts than anything else. So, but, I mean, you made a statement that, and these two resolutions had been proposed by the planning commission. And your statement was that anything that's going to be zoned M2 would require a complete application, the groundwater impact and all like this. So I'm having a concern that the Resolution 13-03 hadn't been as qualified to come to this commission for approval or not.
And I know, now, he did make out, he was supporting a lot of us that were there. We didn't go into that and have him speak to it. But he did have, he at least had an application.
Well, I guess we'll cover that later, but that's why I would certainly hold you to be there. The rest is the same, but certainly, you know, I'm going to stop there.
Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Cordell, you want to sit back down?
I might make one other statement.
Yes.
In the water is water category, some of the other areas that are in the M2 area that we've got to be concerned about, whether, if they are presented to us are arsenals, fireworks manufacturing and storage, solid waste processing and recycling, waste incinerators, including hospital and medical waste, petroleum refining, mining activities, adult book stores, you know, there are other things there besides, you know, just mining operations, as someone mentioned.
Okay, before, we're going to, Mr. Cordell, before you step down, could you give us any other kind of uses in, could you think that one of these M2s, once it's zoned M2, and I'm going to bring in railroad ties itself, can I now change that over next week and haul hazardous waste out of there?
Elaborate a little more on your statement.
If I can, if I can sort of get to be, once we get something zoned properly and we have an M2, regardless of what you want to call it today, tomorrow, the guy dies and his family sells the business, or he finds out he can make more money hauling nuclear waste through here and using the railroads for it. I don't think I could do that. But regardless, those kind of things happen in real life. So what happens once I zone this piece of property as an M2? Now, the guy can convert it to any other M2 use that he wants from that day forward. He's already got a reclamation plan that deals with digging a hole in the ground, now he's doing something different. So does he have to come back and recite the whole area? When I read it, it sounds to me like once it's zoned, he can do anything in that zoning category regardless. It's like when I get something that's zoned R3, say I'm going to put in, you know, several block-lined houses and I decide to put in an apartment complex, I can go put in an apartment complex because I've got an R3 now unless it beats that category, I do with what I want. That's my concern is what happens to these zoning things. Once they get zoned as something, they can do anything really within that zoning classification if I understand it right. And they can make that change any kind they want. Is that right?
That's a very specific question. I wish Mr. Duffin here to answer that. He's a specialist, I handle it, I'm not trying to duck that and whatever. We just have to evaluate every circumstance on its own and relating to the what's in these guidelines. Make the best decision.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Mr.?
I have a quick question. Mr. Cordell. You mentioned fireworks manufacturing and storage. Has, I assume that's part of the M2?
The what?
M2 group or will be going into the area?
Fireworks.
Fireworks.
And storage.
Explosives in the urban growth area, but we don't want to allow them out of the county.
I didn't make you gather.
Okay. Do you realize we have, we have firework storage right now in this county?
I don't like this.
Okay, are we ready?
I didn't make you gather.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? If you vote yes, then you're voting for the amendment. We ready to vote?
We do roll call.
We sure can. We're voting on the amendment right now, Bobby.
We're voting for, we're voting for President, or are we voting for Mr. Bryan?
Just like Mr. Bryan stated. Yes, we're just voting on the amendment. If you vote yes, then the amendment, you know, if you vote yes, then you're voting for the amendment. And you requested a roll call? Okay.
Did we have a second on that amendment?
On the amendment, do we get a second? Yes, okay, we did get a second. Commissioner Duckett, okay. Are we ready? Let's do a roll first.
No.
Yes.
Markell?
No.
Mark.
Yes.
Jake and Mel?
No.
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 Jake and Josh?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Mind, next time when you speak, would you mind speaking into the record and data?
Does anyone want to change their vote?
Okay, did you hear what she said? Does anyone want to change their vote?
13 no, 15 yes.
Okay, all right, so now let's vote on the resolutions. Okay, we ready to vote on the resolution?
If we do that by roll call, I'll submit this vote, please.
You want to roll call it into, okay. Let's wait, can you tell me, are we, you ready to go?
No.
No.
For the law?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Markell?
Yes.
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 Your kid?
Yes.
Chris Richard?
Yes.
What law?
Yes.
David now?
Yes.
No.
Adam, no.
If not, let's have a count. What was, okay, you stuck in. 13, okay, 13 yes, 7 no. Okay. All right. Let's go to the next side of the business. We're going to you being the side. I'm roll out.
A, Resolution 2013, N6, Resolution to the county county founding resolution, 2006 39 to Red Town and 1821 acre tract located north of the Oklahoma Highway from RS1 to C2.
Okay, we need to get a motion, a second, someone to discuss this resolution. Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Do we have a second? Commissioner Duckett, did you, second, okay. All right, let's get into the discussion here.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Kelly?
Can we get someone to explain to us what is RS1 compared to RS10?
Compared to RS2 or C2?
So RS1 to C2.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Cordell, can you explain that, if you don't mind? And we do appreciate you taking your time. I know you have another meeting and we appreciate you doing the best you can on this.
That has to do with, well, R2, for example, you may have two places away from there where R1 is in consideration.
The question is RS1, what is the RS1 section and what is a C2 section? What is the difference?
It's commercial.
It's commercial?
Yes, sir.
In RS1?
Residential.
Residential.
Is it a identity?
R1 or?
RS1.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm sorry, I apologize. But you said that for the safety of this.
But the same one, one is residential, one is commercial, is that right?
I agree.
Any other discussion?
I've got a, just a quick question.
Okay.
And I hate to ask this of you, Mr. Cordell, but if.
Mr. Cordell?
I guess I've been asked this question and it'll pertain to the rest of them as well. Has full and complete application been made? Has full and complete application been made for this zoning change? Meaning all plans, all detail, everything, has everything been submitted?
I don't know what all that was submitted to Mr. Duffin.
Okay, and he's saying though that when you give him an answer, it pertains to all of that, right? Mr. Chance?
Yes, sir. Because I know you've got to leave here in a few moments, my question pertains to all the zoning changes we're looking at tonight. Do you know?
We did discuss all of them in their context of that and we have a couple mechanic missions that were in that, well.
Yeah, Commissioner Duckett, that's the planning question.
But I don't know to the extent of what he, I think he just talked about overall design or overall plans, what they were thinking about doing, I don't, all of them are specific to work.
What, do I think?
Yeah, some application, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to bore the issue.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Right, if you don't recall, you don't recall.
Yes.
Either he, Mr. Duckett, or Mr. Morris, Bill, or what he, I don't know, and he's not here tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly had another question too, didn't you? Did you have another question?
I have a comment to make. My concern being whenever you take what is in a low density, I understand RS1, it is one of the low-density versions of residential in this county. And we're going to stick in the middle of it a commercial piece. Actually, that's legal because that becomes spot zoning. You just got into the residential area, made it commercial. That is prohibited under Tennessee statute and I'm concerned that we're making a sort of a giant leap here in allowing that kind of a step to go forward. And I'd like to understand that process and how we're doing it. And I've said before and I'll say it again here, this is the same thing. This is a case where there needs to be an extraterritorial agreement between the county and the cities because this. the county and the cities because this is taking place in the Telohom and urban, urban growth boundaries. They need to be making the determinations of what meets the standards because that's areas that are going to eventually by definition be acquired by the city and for which they're going to have to enforce zoning and development and growth. And a lot of communities have made those steps to take that extraterritorial kind of provision and we really need to look at doing that and for that reason, again, I'm going to ask that we take.
Uh, you write down as a form of a motion. Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cordell, I know you got to go, so you go ahead and go. Well, thank you for coming and we appreciate what you did.
That is in the Telohom area, you're right on the part and I wish that.
A second, that, a motion. Commissioner Rick. Okay. Our Pauline Terrance says none available, so let's vote on that for voting to table it. Did, did everyone hear Teresa? She asked, did anyone want to change her vote? If not, let's have a count. Okay, eighteen yes to table, okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, when is that to be tabled to?
Uh, when you made your motion, you. You can bring it up at any time, okay?
My, my intent was to, to see if we could engage Telohom some in this and by the next commission meeting.
Okay, let's hold up, let's hold up just a second. I think Commissioner, thank you, you got a call there. That's okay. Give you a chance to be able to turn it off. How's that end?
Anyway, Mr. Mayor, my, my intent was to, to just simply put this aside for right now, make sure that Telohom is engaged and we'll work out before we're going how to deal with these. And I don't have any objection.
Well, he, he said to table till you decide to bring it up.
It comes back often and.
To answer his question.
Bring in Commissioner Bryan to the next meeting.
That is. Uh, Mr. Duckett?
I'd just like to make a comment. Of all zoning in U.D.V., it's a responsibility of the county commission and the cities have no say in some.
Okay.
Chapter statutes.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, and, and I turn to a comment on what, uh, uh, Mark raised. The statute that Mr. Duckett says talks around that issue about the fact that when you've got the urban growth boundary and that's contemplated coming to the city, but the statute says until it does come to the city, it rests with the county to control and make those decisions. But by the same token, it, there's nothing to prevent the county from consulting with or getting the input of the city or even the statute to wait. It's an approval then. Doing it's probably the smart thing to do, but the, the responsibility lies with the county to make that decision. It's not so. I have, we, we, we can appoint members to the planning commission in such a manner to make sure that all those things are represented so that we know that we're, we're getting total coverage of the county. It doesn't just have to be rural only on it. It, it is the county responsibility and that does include the citizens from those areas as well. I have a question I'd like to ask.
The one we just voted on?
That we just tabled.
Okay.
All right, it's 18.21 acres. Uh, that's in the 14th congressional district.
Which is your district?
Yes. What are they willing to use that for? I've heard, I've heard they're going to bring in logs.
Climate control storage units.
Well, we got two commissioners that's on the planning commission, Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Duckett. Maybe they can answer that question.
Is that going to be then passed to the 3-way market?
Okay, pass through the 3-way market. All right, now for the clearing, where the county board and western railroad has done that clearing, what are they going to put that?
Commissioner Duckett, are you?
That particular area that he's talking about has already been approved by, by this.
Yeah, but I think his question is what are they going, he don't know what they're going to put on, you know?
They're going to put some kind of a warehousing complex so they can ship stuff out.
Okay.
You mean we approve this, like you don't want it as law?
We can't tell the railroad what to haul.
We can say what they can put there.
And we put all, all three approved, they can put in a lucky non-creation area. They don't even know what you put on.
Okay, we probably need to get on to the next resolution, Pauline Terrance, if we're discussing something, don't we got a motion now?
B, resolution 2013, N3, resolution to amend, copy county founding resolution 2006, 39 to Red Town property tract located between the Oklahoma Highway and Highway 53, M2 special impact industrial district.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this resolution.
Okay.
A second then.
Wait, we got to get it on the floor first. Let's get a motion and a second to get it on the floor. All right, do we have a second? Okay, thank you. Now, now we got it on the floor.
I have a motion to table resolution 13 dash O3.
Do we have a second on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that, but again, it's to get an understanding of what's going on and make sure that we do understand once we have the zoning in place.
Okay.
What, what can and can't happen in that area.
Okay, let's vote.
Listening to the election commissioners.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Pauline Terrance said, Kenny, we got a vote. So we got a motion and a second to table, so let's just go ahead and. Let's vote.
If anyone wants to change their vote.
Okay, it's supposed to come up here. All right, let's have a count, please.
Resolution 2013, N4, resolution to amend, copy county founding resolution 2006, 39 to Red Town Highway 53, City Land, living in Manchester, Park Road, Road on Old Woodberry Highway to C2, general commercial district, 300 feet there on either side of Highway 53.
Okay, let's get a motion and a second. All right, do we have a second? Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is there anybody in the public audience that has an issue with this I mean, obviously with the unruled ones dealt with, I mean, this is out dealing with near the new proposed numbers to the right.
It includes that property. Uh, Mr. Rick, I originally went to the, uh, planning commission and asked for mine of property, 2401 Woodberry Highway to be zoned commercial, okay? And in the process, they decided to go from City Land to Southwood Palmer Road, 300 feet inside of it. Uh, I've talked to several people that have read their minds, that it's going to actually make their property more valuable. It does not increase the property taxes, I checked on that. It's just, it's just a way of making it more valuable.
It don't, it don't increase them until it's sold as a commercial, but.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, as long as it's residential, they still live there, still residential.
Well, as long, as long as they're residents, they're.
Yeah, as long as they're still living there.
Commercial, but it's not residential.
Yes.
And, Mr. Duckett? I've had three miles. Commissioner Duckett?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan, you'll be next.
Can I have the floor, please?
Commissioner, let's, let's hear what Commissioner Duckett has to say.
Woodberry Highway is now a five lane road and there are several businesses on the road that's in a residential area of that. We felt like that all that area up to there should be, should, should be rezoned to commercial so that it will be a district where commercial activities can move into and commercial ones and learn how to use those properties.
Okay, Commissioner Chan?
The, the landowners that, I guess, uh, this is not a contiguous piece of property for the entire business by one landowner, is it? Okay, uh, those who, those who are, are impacted by this, they even want this.
The ones that I had talked to, just mops next to them, I don't care.
Yeah, right, people work and everything, so it's, it's not always a big one to make it to public hearing, but, but I didn't know, I didn't know if our planning commission approached each one of these landowners and said, we're going to change your property from residential.
Okay. Yes, okay. Any other discussion? All right, question, we call this vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I need change in vote to abstain.
Pardon?
I need change my vote to abstain.
Okay, um, when she asked, you, you didn't know what she wants to abstain when you asked that question. Okay, did everybody get the question she said? Did anybody else want to change their vote? If, if not, in the South account, then we know that Commissioner Webb wants to abstain. What's that put us? 16 what?
16 years.
Okay, 16 years.
A, resolution 2013, not five, resolution to withdraw from the TSC consolidated retirement system as of July 1, 2014. This will not affect current employees, only given hires as of January 1, 2014. July 1, sorry.
Okay, let's get a motion and a second.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? All right.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible to combine these two?
Hold on just a minute. Who's second? Commissioner Ma? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would like to ask that now, did this one and the next one be combined?
Well, we've already got a motion and a second on this, so, okay. Any discussion? Uh, you want to tell us what committee this came through? Uh, Commissioner Rick?
Yes, uh, this came from Budget and Finance. We had the, uh, I guess the head of TCRA and his, their general advisor come down and, and cover the issues, uh, dealing with, at our last commission meeting, when we adopted the, basically the defined contribution plan for future employees, uh, we did not realize, because I guess we're still cutting edge on this, that by electing to, to go with a defined contribution plan for new employees and not have a defined benefit plan, we were in essence saying that we didn't want to participate in the TCRS program because the TCRS program only has defined benefit programs within. So by, by what we, uh, did at the November meeting, they said in order to make it technically correct, we're going to have to withdraw from the TCRS and, and when we voted in November, we thought this would be effective for new hires beginning July 1 of 13. Is that right, Mary Ann?
Actually, we thought January 1st, 2013.
Yeah, 2013. Anyway, this pushes the effective date out to July 1st of 14, so it's 18 months from now for new hires after that day. So two things changed. One, if we, if technically said we will not be, for new employees will not be participating in the TCRS program. Existing employees still will, won't affect them at all and the, it delays for new employees until July 1 of 14, so.
Well, how does it affect elected officials?
Pardon?
How does it affect elected officials? They're in the same program?
Uh, I can't answer. I don't think he does. It's hard. Talk about currently?
No, he's talking about, and then in the 14, we have new elections, absolutely take that.
I'm saying that they will be in the new program, not in TCRS.
Commissioner Farrar?
Mr. Rick, can you explain why, uh, it was taken out TCRS again? I don't think I really understood that.
Okay, TCRS in, uh, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement Program is made up by, by definition of plans that must be, have a defined benefit program in it. Uh, and if, if we choose for new employees to, to only have a defined contribution plan, which is what we approved, they're saying that you're, for new employees and for the county, you're really do not want to be, uh, an active participant after July 1 of 14 in the TCRS, uh, program. And, and, and it, it sounds kind of technical, but that's what they, they say. Your, your new employees are not going to be part of the TCRS program because they're going to be participating in a defined contribution program that's going to be administered by a company that's affiliated with TCRS, but it's not technically under TCRS.
Is the state taking a map? Is that my understanding, is the state taking new employees off the TCRS or is it county commission?
We are, we, the state gave counties in the last legislation the right to determine what type of defined, uh, better retirement plans we wanted to make available for our employees and we determined at the last commission meeting that in the long-term interest of this county, going to what would be equivalent into a public is a 457B program, but it's equivalent like a 401K program for our new employees after, which turns out to be July 1 of 14. Because what it will do, certainly it will hopefully not only provide a good benefit, the county's going to put aside 5% of their pay, let it match up to 5%, they could even do more than that, but I don't want to get into the whole debate of what we adopted in November. This is just what I call a technical clarification that, that TCRS came back and says, guys, we, we read your resolution, your motion, uh, if you're going to go down that path, you technically have to elect to terminate out of the TCRS program come July 1 of 14. So.
That's why this is before.
Okay, any other questions? Let's vote, please. Okay.
Let's see. Did this have to have two thirds of them? What says the document?
What says the document?
Yeah, that's what I'm reading. It's what it says. The short one says, "I don't vote for it." Well, short one's up there. It don't pass.
Well, it usually is affiliated with the state as a product of that, so.
Can I ask a question with that then? Since this was a technical change to continue what we adopted in November, if we have turned this down, that means we've thrown everybody out of that retirement plan. Is that right? Well. I mean, if I understand this right, we're going to throw everyone who is currently in the plan and would stay in, they're going to be out because we adopted out of the plan on our prior approval in November, so forward-going, everyone's going to be just in the 401(k) plan.
No, I don't think that's the case. I think what, if this vote holds, there are two things. One, I don't know what it would take to get another revote, but waiting to the next commission meeting, the, or we go back and say, the people that voted no, I don't know if they voted just to come out of the plan because if they did, then it's inconsistent. I don't, but we don't have to go back and say, we'll either have to go with another option, come back to this full commission and says, you know, of the retirement options that was proposed last November, we'll have to come back and either propose another one.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to jump in there, but I look and see I voted no, and that is not what I voted. I voted yes.
You voted yes?
Yes, sir.
What is, sorry. If you voted yes. Any of you commissioners can call for a division of the house, and that would call for an immediate revote. Any commissioner. Do you need a second on that count? Okay. So let's revote. Let's let him reset it before we do. We'll revote on it again.
Mr. Chairman, do we need any further discussion before it is read?
No, we're going to revote.
You know, because one thing, now Mr. Rickin didn't necessarily elaborate on this, but in the general consensus of retirement programs, what is happening is retirement programs used to be defined benefit plans, and that is becoming very, very quickly something of the past. And one reason being is because of prohibitive costs associated with having a defined benefit plan. Therefore, that's releasing companies and all kinds of other business entities, government entities going to 401(k), which are defined contribution plans, profit-sharing plans. They are plans of which the county can elect to make certain contributions and match up to certain contributions if the employees elect to do so. And you're providing whatever that account totals, and the employees have options of putting their monies in different accounts and different options that they may have available to them. So one of the primary concerns here is staying in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, which is a defined benefit plan, could become a cost prohibitive to taxpayers of this county. Therefore, they're not taking away anything from current employees. It would simply be new hires starting at July 1, 2014. You would be providing them benefits in a 401(k) defined contribution plan as opposed to the much more costly and unknown defined benefit plan. Now, I don't know if that'd help any rest of you, but it's pretty significant before we vote that commissioners do understand what's happening.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you. Let's vote. Uh, not yet. Hold on just a minute. Are we good? Hang on just a minute. Okay. Now you can ask that question. If not, listen, let's have a count, please. Well, we just want to make sure, and that's why this up here in the discussion, make sure that we follow procedure. Okay. What we got now? Pete taking it? Okay. All right.
Can I ask a question just for the attorney?
Okay.
Just on this particular thing.
Okay.
Does this have to go, does this have to go to the state and come back to us for application since it is a two-third private act? That's you.
Well, ask him again.
Since this is a two-thirds vote and it's affecting the state, is this anything dealing with the private act with the change because of the content, and does it have to be brought back to the full commission for application?
Doesn't that look like it has to come back and it just indicates it asks that we have sent certification? We had two-thirds voted, membership voted for it.
Could we check to be sure just as a follow-up and make sure that we follow what we got through the mayor's office or you, one, just to make sure of that?
If it goes through the mayor's office, the commissioner, it'll go through the attorney, so.
Does the mayor's office make sure that it is something we're going to follow?
It's right to the attorney.
Thank you, sir.
He's looking at it there.
I know now that we voted, it's going to go usually.
Yeah, the things that generally have to come back are like private acts.
And that's my concern, it's a amendment to a private act at the state level, it's to a GBA at the same point. That's what's been done down the years going by.
Listen, I don't think there's a private act, it's just a vote.
Even though it affects the private act?
Well, he'll, let's just, Commissioner, he'll check anyway, okay? We'll just, we'll check. Okay. Ms. Patton?
A resolution two thousand thirteen oh six, State of Tennessee Employees' Compensation Plan and Trust, 457(b) resolution, and participating employer agreement.
All right. Let's get a motion and a second so we can talk about this.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, seconded. All right. Discussion?
I ask, Mary Ann, we did get all the boxes checked through this one. It's ready to go.
Yes, we did, and questions we're not supposed to answer say we're not supposed to answer.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's vote, please. Okay. Everyone heard that? Does anyone want to change their vote? If not, let's have a count. Okay.
A resolution two thousand thirteen oh seven, resolution adopting policies and procedures for the administration of federally taxed debt obligations.
Okay. Let's get a motion and a second so we can talk about this.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions been called. Let's vote, please. We've got one more. Okay. Okay. If not, let's have a count. Okay.
G, copy county debt management policy.
Okay. Let's get us a motion and a second here, so. Thank you. Thank you. Do you see the two? Okay. Discussion? Let's vote, please. Ms. Thompson? Thank you. Okay. If not, let's have a count. Okay.
H, report on debt obligation.
This does not require a vote, just needed to reflect in the minutes that you presented with the state debt obligations report. This is wrong. The jail bond is never recently solved. Now, anytime you do bond transactions, you'll see this report on, in the minutes of the agenda, on the agenda.
Move to accept.
Okay. We don't have to, we don't have to vote on that now? Is that what you said? Okay. As long as it's in the meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I ask a question about it?
Oh, okay.
This came up in our call this, and, Mary Ann, again, we didn't see this from Budget and Finance, the repayment schedule for 2014, the cumulative principal redeemed debt, do you know what makes that up, Megan?
Give her a mention there.
Yes, that will be listed.
No, no, no. What makes?
Well, I think, I think Ms. Manas was at her top of that. Is that what you answered? Okay. Rush had a different question. Okay. Commissioner Rickin's got a different question. Did you think?
When you said this, the five-year, 15-year, 15-year, the cumulative amount, is that all debt, school debts, every debt that might be coming due in those five-year periods?
Yes, that's up right now.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's go to the next item. Ms. Patton? You're doing a good job, by the way.
J, two thousand thirteen, approve this.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Wait a minute. What we're going to wait, then we'll skip back to the other. Okay. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Okay. Go ahead. But you're right. She jumped one second. Well, you just showed me that you was. I was paying attention. Okay. Commissioner Morris, you seconded. Is that right? Oh, thank you. Yes, and you first. That's right. Okay. Are we ready? Any discussion? Let's vote, please. This is on the roll, this. Yep. I think, well, we're getting out of here earlier than that. Commissioner Matt, are you having a problem with your? Okay. If not, let's have a count. Twenty, yes. Okay. Now, Ms. Patton?
Gifted budget amendment. There are actually two, and one on the back.
We're going to do both that one? We're going to do both of them?
So moved.
You got a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rickin? Has everyone had a chance to look at the amendments? Okay. If there's no discussions on this, go ahead and vote on them. If not, let's have a count, please. This item is going to be a lot easier. Okay. Twenty, yes. Okay. We're down to statements in and out. Commissioners?
The board, I guess, still kind of underfunded. Number of K.
Oh, you want to do other? What have you got?
I would like, and I'm not sure what the capital is, but this, the zoning issues, I would like to see the reformation of that 1101, whatever that committee is.
The coordinating committee?
Our coordinating committee, be rechartered and do their work to come back and then get adopted because, and again, Mr. Darden's not here, I spent some time with him this afternoon. The original, and I do have doubt that the original chartering commission was appropriately adopted by all the parties. I still would like to get confirmation that that was, did occur, but.
Okay. Are your, your motion is to create a reading in state to 1101 committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Let's vote, please. Okay. Commissioner Dudley, Commissioner Fane, and then Commissioner Alford, and then Commissioner Weston.
Okay. The citizens have to reconvene over their agenda.
Right there, I'll just say what I heard today, in that the original chartering commission left a lot of things off, the mapping and the redistricting, there's, and there was things that almost addressed what we came up on Homewood Road, on Highway 53, that we probably should look at major highway corridors and put a C3 zone or two, whatever, down major highways, rather than having to come up and spot this along the way. There was things like that that Mr. Darden decided to be, and he said, you know, this, it would be good to clear up a lot of things that was on that original map that a new chartering commission would do, and it made sense to me. That's why I proposed this.
And that no one committed, which I was a member. We're not charged in some, we were structured to PTA, UDBs, and all. That was her, that's what we were doing. We weren't. We weren't, we weren't setting up something, that was only approved after the fact.
I, I really don't understand the whole process, but it appears that this 1101 committee not only established the zones, but the zones within the zones.
Well, can they do the zoning too, Commissioner? If, as a committee, can they set up the zoning too?
1101 committee was not charged.
But can they do it? Do they have the ability to do it?
They have to go back and look at 1101.
Okay. Well, that was settled, do you...
I don't have to...
Yes, do you, do you remember, the one that was on the committee, do you remember who all was on it? Speak up. Commissioner, could you speak in a microphone so we can...
Bob Douglas, Mr. Duckett, Mr. Ricky Milburn, Mr. Austin Anderson.
Carol Willis.
Oh, yeah, Carol Willis was on there.
Well, you had Tallahassee Manchester too on the committee, too. Okay. Robin was on it?
Robin, were you on that? He was on Bedro Park.
Mr. Chairman, you know, for this to be introduced at the very last minute, and I appreciate Mr. Brinkley wanting, maybe he's trying to do, but, you know, it hadn't been on the agenda. We don't really know a lot of answers to this in trying to reestablish a committee or establish a committee. You know, I feel that's something we ought to give a lot of thought to, you know, before we, just as a latter hour, after we've been in this meeting two hours, and we suddenly start to consider something that could have a lot greater ramifications. And certainly, no one here has had to answer all these questions. Very well got a person to sit out here in the audience and, uh, that could have been on that coordinating committee. But that's been a while back, and I think we need to really look into that and get a lot of information before we try to make this kind of decision.
Are you making a motion to table it?
Well, I'll add some quick before that goes, if we're going to table it, I like to add something before we do.
I believe it may have been Mr. Smith or Ford's week.
Mr. Bryan, were you finished?
Basically, yes. I'm just trying to say, you know, we need to look at this and, as far as trying to make a decision about something like this, we need to have the adequate information in order to do it.
Okay.
Since I made the motion, I kind of agree with Bobby. I, and I don't want Eric to have a chance to talk. If we can either move this to the appropriate committee, I would like to see it get back at the next commission, uh, to, to request the mayor to move forward with this because I, I think it's important, I think it would accomplish a common good.
Okay, do you want to re-change your motion?
I'm here, here.
Okay.
All I always want to add is that the way the process actually works is, we don't, as a commission or a legislative body, own the committee ourselves. In fact, it's not even required that anybody on this commission be on the committee. Uh, the way it works is, and all we can really do is ask the mayor's office to convene this, this coordinating committee. And, and what their duties and responsibilities would be, would be to take the, the current growth plan, examine it, update it with any, like you were saying, you know, we've got a lot of roads that are now two-lane divided highways and such as that. But their, their job would be to examine what was done in the past, update it to what the current needs are for the county and the two municipalities. We've also had a census, we've grown by 10,000 people. Uh, and that would be the purpose of it, but we don't establish that committee ourselves, that's something the mayor's office establishes. All we can do is ask that it be established.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley, would you like to withdraw your motion to the...
No, not yet. Because, because what I want to understand is, if we take no action tonight, where, what's going to happen when there in our next commissioning? Who's going to take some action to educate somebody, bring it back, or I'll be making the same motion to another agency?
Well, thank Commissioner Chance to say that I'm the one that has to call it, you know, that's my call, so...
And, and I don't mind leaving the motion that says I request the mayor to consider forming this committee.
Okay, consider, okay.
And, and if he doesn't, report back to us at the next mission, why didn't you do so?
I'll second that, yeah.
All right, you want to adjourn? Okay. Question? Okay, let's vote please.
Okay, what are you voting on? Start with that.
Request that the mayor take a look at bringing back up the 1101 committee to take a look at the zoning at the... Mr. Chairman?
So this committee has asked, what do we do?
Well, it's, it's not a...
You know how to call this.
It's, it's defined as the who's in it. You've got the county executive or his proxy. You've got the mayor from each municipality, a member from the governing board, board of the municipality system. So, it's, it's, it's well-defined exactly who was on that, that coordinate committee.
Where are you reading that from, Commissioner?
Public Chapter 1101.
Okay. Okay, I thought you was on the internet, I didn't know you had that. Okay. All right, okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Yeah, we have more voting. Well, what did you, what did you want to make? Okay. Any other changes? If not, let's have the count. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have to keep in mind that any decisions reached by this committee has to be approved by the elected study bodies of cities and this body.
Right. I think we have to involve them back into the voting, Commissioner, like you said, it's defined on who has to be back on the board.
And we need to look at 1101?
Yes.
See what, what they're trying to do, and I don't think it's on...
Okay, that's what we got. Well, that was one of the things that Commissioner Brinkley, what you concerned about the zoning side of it? Wasn't that one of your questions? Okay. Okay, statements and announcements, we're still on that. Any other, Commissioner? Okay, if not, if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to say something, I'll give them two minutes each, and if not, is anybody in the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, stand up.